Everyone, welcome to the Oviedo City Council Budget Kickoff Work Session. We have four members of council present this evening. Councilman Britton is away on a work assignment. Mr. Cobb is also not with us this evening, so our finance director, Mr. Jerry Boop, will be running the show. So Jerry, why don't I turn it over to you? And I know we're here just for an update as we go into the budget season. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if Brian had an opportunity to talk to you about a couple of things before I left, and then we left pretty quickly. But one of the things that we wanted to talk to you about tonight was the CRA itself. And what was included in your package was the refund of the over contribution to the CRA back to the general fund. So he wants to ask for direction on that tonight. The other matter that came up that we're looking for direction on, and we don't necessarily need this tonight, but we want to introduce it to you. Last year, you know, we had a decrease in the general obligation bond ad valorem revenue. And we took that decrease and we added it to the general fund at the lower rate and kept the total ad valorem flat. So he wanted to introduce that to you tonight as well for consideration, not necessarily looking for direction tonight. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure that he had...
Or just to keep it the way we did it last year?
Yeah, the way we did it last year.
Right.
Which, on an incremental basis, years going forward, it helps the general fund significantly. But before we get started, I would like to introduce Kelly Jones. Last year, you knew her as the business analyst. Kelly has been promoted to the finance and budget officer in the last year.
Great.
It's felt that that was really important because it's going to strengthen the process as we develop the budget as well as the CAFR. The two really need to be married together to create the kind of document and process that we're working for. And we've already yielded results from that over the last year, and that we found that there are certain aspects of the budget that could be included in the comprehensive end report and vice versa, so that saved us a significant amount of time. So with that, there's various types of funds that the city operates, one of which is a special revenue fund. And special revenue funds fund things like local option gas tax. And local option gas taxes are used for transportation-related expenses. We also have debt service funds. Debt service funds aggregate financial resources to be able to pay all the debt service throughout the year that we're responsible for. There's also capital projects funds that we use to aggregate financial funds for the building of facilities such as the new fire station. And the last type of major fund we have is the enterprise funds, such as the water sewer and the newly created golf fund that we'll be putting into action in the next couple of weeks. Tonight, our primary focus is going to be on the general fund. And what we do every year in the month of March is we use this as a way to introduce to you what we knew last year, where we think we're currently at, and how things are flowing into the beginning of the budget process. So the starting point, if you will, is last year's budget, $29 million, $88,000. Well, what's happened to that number since this time last year? So the first things, the first component that we're going to cover with you are the revenues. Our estimated ad valorem that's coming in next year is $553,000, higher than what we collected last year, okay? With that, the difficult thing is how much of that increase is going to go to the CRA and how much of that increase is going to go to the general fund? Because there's a tilt in the valuations now because of the extensive construction that's gone on over at Oviedo on the Park, we're expecting a little bit of a shift to pull more funds out of the general fund towards the CRA. So it's a little volatile right now, and we don't know exactly how that's going to play out, okay? But this is our best March guess, if you will. Going from there, we're projecting 3% salary increases for the folks in the general fund. In doing that, we anticipate increasing the transfer from the water sewer fund and the stormwater fund by 3% to cover a component of that increase. Those job duties and responsibilities that the general fund performs on behalf of those funds, okay? Transfer from the impact fee fund is going to be decreased this year. That's because it was used last year to fund the newly created police officer. So next year, or this current fiscal, next year, the general fund will then take over the total responsibility for that police officer. Last year, there was also a transfer from the, or I should say current year, was also a transfer from the fire impact fee fund of $65,000. Last year, when we ended the fiscal year, the fire impact fee fund had a deficit of $65,000 due to its construction commitments related to the fire station that we had to go back and cover at the end of the fiscal year because of the CAFR, okay? So that was refunded this fiscal year. Also, another area of volatility is the transfer in from the building services fund. It's difficult to estimate what that number's really going to be because we don't know what the activity related to building services is going to be. So we sweep as much money, excess, if you will, out of the building services fund back into the general fund to fund general fund activities. So there's an area of volatility there that we're currently working through. So bottom line, we anticipate right now, with the best information that we currently have, we anticipate a $260,000 decrease in what we know to revenues going into the budget process for next fiscal year. Any questions so far? All right, moving on to the expense side of things. We've plugged into our model a 3% citywide salary increase for all the non-union employees, okay? And that ferrets out to be, including the change in retirement with the 401 plan, a $146,000 increase, okay? Now, for those folks that are in public safety, we're adding the same percentage increase, and that totals a $364,000 increase. $130,000 approximately for police and $100,000 approximately for fire. Two components in there. We also have the change in pension plan going into next year, okay? The changes that we budget for in the pension plan come straight from the actuaries. We don't compute those. We have an actual report that we get every year from the actuaries, Foster and Foster, and what they do is they give us a two-year look forward, and then they adjust it in the third year, the second or the third year, depends on the market volatility. But right now, with what we know, based upon the representations that they've made to us, these are the increases attributable to the respective pension plans. So we'll have an increase in salaries attributable to public safety of approximately $365,000.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
How did it jump so much? Is it just because of the expected anticipated time to retirement and a lot of people are going to retire? That's a huge increase.
Not being funny, yes, yes, and yes, okay? It's a very volatile process, and it's tied directly into the performance of the stock market.
That is.
The performance of the plan.
Okay.
The pension plan.
Huh.
It's a very, very difficult answer to give you something that's concrete, okay?
So it's not like, oh, we should hire one person each year so we have one new person retiring every year? Like, is there a way we'd strategize to eliminate that in the future?
No.
Okay.
No, absolutely not.
All right, just checking.
Yeah, we're tied into the statute 175, 185 plans, and this process is somewhat mandated by them. So it's just part of the process.
Okay.
Great question. All right. Including the general fund this year, we partially funded these positions, the new assistant city manager, the IT director, the communications officer, and the police officer. As I noted before, the police officer was pretty much funded through impact fees, and this is the remaining piece that will be included in next year's budget as they take on the full monty there, if you will. And also, the net increase for fully funding these current positions, which are partially funded this year because of their start dates, is going to be $66,000 for the next fiscal year, okay? Debt related to the general fund, that debt which the general fund is responsible for will be increasing by almost $19,000. The vehicle replacement fund that we have listed there, we don't, this is what we currently have in our vehicle replacement fund. We have lease obligations of $525,000 so far, leaving a balance of about $201,000 left to purchase other vehicles. We don't know what this number's going to be for next year. We're still working on this, okay? So there's a little volatility in this number, if you will. Healthcare, same deal as the pension plans. We rely upon the actuaries to tell us what those numbers are going to be for the next fiscal year, okay? So we're expecting the city portion of healthcare in total with the rate increase to go up approximately $450,000, okay? Nothing we can do about that, no control over that. Insurance, general liability, every year is a matter of general practice. We budget a 10% increase in the general liability insurance for the entire city. Concurrent with that, we also budget a rate increase which is attributable to workers' compensation. Workers' compensation over the last year has become much more volatile. In the previous years, we've been able to budget between 5 and 10%. They're looking at, there's been some Supreme Court decisions over the last year that have awarded significantly higher attorney fees. So we're expecting this number to come in possibly higher than 10%, maybe as high as 18 to 20% in this next year, okay? Again, it's not anything we have any control over.
How many workers' comp claims have we had in the last couple of years? Because I know the rate, at least, I run my own business with only one person, and I'm in it. And since I haven't claimed anything for many, many years, my rate has steadily gone down. Do we have, are we going, how are we going down now? How are we doing on that?
With the rates?
With the number of claims.
I have to ask, can I speak to that?
We average anywhere between 35 and 45 actual claims per year that we manage.
I would say in conjunction with that, a few years ago, we hired a risk manager, and the risk manager set up a safety program. And that has had a positive impact on the claims process as well for us, a positive influence. The claims are actually reviewed in committee, and they try to look for process improvements to prevent those claims. Don't miss anything in that kind of, so. All right. So also included in this current year's budget are various non-recurring expenses, $50,000 of which was the advertising that was used for the geo obligation for the new public safety building. Also, there's another $50,000 in there for building maintenance that we don't think we're going to need next fiscal year. Down here in capital, capital is not funded unless we have a funding source, okay? So right now, we're not identifying any funding sources for any capital projects yet. We'll bring that back to you in the month of April, at the end of April, when we have our next budget workshop, okay? We're going through the process right now of aggregating all the capital information from the various different directors. Once we get that, we'll be able to introduce that to you. That's simply not mature right now, okay? Going from there, same kind of deal, transfers in from the, or I should say, out of the general fund. Right now, we expect, these are capital funds right here, we expect them to decrease for general facility improvement, okay, by about $103,000, a reduction of expenses. The technology improvement fund will be flat, perhaps maybe a little bit lower, because a few years ago, what we did is we engaged Epic Consulting Group. We came in, took a look at our IT department, they gave us a three-year plan. This is what you need to do to improve your department and bring it, its standards up to the 21st century. So we're in year three of that plan right now, okay? Pay for performance. Last year, it was identified that we really needed to come up with a funding source that would cover those employees who were long-term, who had extensive vacation and extensive sick time payouts, okay? This line was established to cover that, to assist the departments that actually needed the funding to facilitate those payouts so they wouldn't be over budget, okay? The last item that you see here is the reserve for contingencies line. Reserve for contingencies line is $172,000. That was on there last year. We simply don't have enough information right now to develop any kind of a reserve, okay? Because we don't know what some of these other pieces are going to bring. So right now, to wrap this all up, it looks like we're looking at a $260,000 shortfall with what we know in the revenues, a $600,000 increase with what we know on the expense side, and an $890,000 change in the budget, unfunded as we currently stand. Of course, that number will change as we go forward. Some of this information matures, we look at things differently, and so on. But every year in March, we use this process to try and introduce to you, this is our starting point, this is where we think we're going, and to involve you along the way. Because quite frankly, the general fund is the most volatile fund we have. The other funds either have their own revenue sources through fee for service, but the most competition is within the general fund, and we really need your help.
Right.
In identifying the priorities. So with that, I will ask you if you have any questions.
I have something totally unrelated. I was going to ask Brian, but I'll just ask you. What ever happened to retail strategies when we got them? Did we ever get an update from them on how they were doing, the work they were doing on our behalf? Remember when we hired them up to go fill some of these stores and stuff?
I believe that they're currently under contract. I can't tell you where that's at, though.
If you can?
I will.
Just put it on your list. Just, I'd like an update on that. They were here like months ago, and we were supposed to get reports on what they were up to and...
I can tell you that we did a lot of work in GIS. We gave them a lot of information, showing them basically all the current retail facilities around the city, all the various different locations, what was there, what wasn't there, what was available.
Do you know, have you got any reports back from them yet?
No, I have not, because I've not been involved in that.
Mr. Cobb told me last week that he had been receiving calls from people who were interested because they had reached out. That's all I've heard. He didn't say who it was.
Yeah, just so you know, for you two, if you weren't here, we hired this group. They're supposed to go give us a retail strategy. It's the name of their company, and they were supposed to go look at how to fill this place. And they had, you know, deep relationships with a lot of retail people. They go to trade shows, they do all kinds of different things, so. And we pay them, you know, I'm not sure...
Around $30,000?
Yeah, somewhere in that range, to go out and fill it up. So, you know, I'm just thinking, you'll give us update, no worries.
Anything else? Good.
The, I don't see a transfer to the, because you're saying you're going to create a new enterprise fund for the golf course, correct?
Correct.
And judging by the other numbers later on in the agenda, we're going to need a transfer to the golf course enterprise fund, correct?
Guess we will. I have more currently...
About $2.1 million?
No.
No, that is right. That's about, 2.6. Yeah, you're right, about 2.1. Over time, not immediately, but over time, okay? To answer your question, we're currently working on that. We established the golf enterprise fund today, and we're computing the intra-fund transfers. And we're going to, the first piece that we're going to fund is the operational expenses attributable to the rest of this fiscal year, okay? That's roughly going to be $300,000 and change, okay?
Fifty times six months.
I'm sorry?
Fifty thousand a month, five six months roughly, is that?
No. Roughly, yes, you're right. Thank you. That's about right. I think the total's $290,000, okay? So that's where, that's where that's going to, then that will be on the April 3rd agenda, okay? It's part of the mid-year adjustments.
And where, do you know where it's coming from yet?
It will be coming from Stormwater.
All from Stormwater?
Yes.
So that's a loan from one enterprise fund to the other, so it has to be repaid?
No, I'm trying to look at things a little bit differently, okay? A great question, because I was, excuse me, let me get some water. A great question, because I was actually discussing that with Mr. Cobb today. What I would like to do, and I still need to introduce this to Lonnie, excuse me, is I would like to develop a relationship between the Stormwater Fund and the Water and Sewer Fund where there's like a co-relationship between them and the Golf Fund. They're independent, yet they rely upon each other, okay? So what I would like...
Is the Stormwater with, so the Stormwater, so the Water and Sewer are together then?
Water and Sewer together, and they're own enterprise fund.
Okay.
Stormwater's not an enterprise fund, is it?
Yes, it is.
It is.
We transitioned it this past year from a special revenue fund to an enterprise fund because it's more suitable to be an enterprise fund than it is a special revenue fund. Now, so what I'm trying to do with Lonnie, and I had this conversation with Brian today, and this concept is not mature yet, okay? So I really can't tell you for sure, for sure. But there's a relationship between the Golf Fund and the Enterprise Fund. They all kind of co-depend on each other. And what I would like to do is I would like to create a relationship between the Enterprise Funds and the Golf Funds that basically says, you know what, we need each other. So I want to contribute X dollars to you, okay? And it will be handle like investment in Golf Fund, okay? Because what I don't want to do from a financial perspective is I don't want to place another financial burden on the Golf Fund that it just cannot handle at this point, okay? So the relationship would be very similar to what we see in private industry. When I used to work for big corporations, you would see on their balance sheet, investment in so-and-so, didn't accrue interest, just sat there as an investment in. I'm not sure how to work that out. Like I said, this is not a mature concept right now, but Kelly and I are working through it, Collette and I are working through it. We're trying to develop the information to be able to do that. Because the last thing that I want to do is your finance director is place another burden on the Golf Fund. I want it to be...
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I only want a vote of five.
Okay. But that's what I'm trying to do.
I think you get like 2.1 million, you know, just, just to go a little bit. I mean, when you...
Yeah, just together.
But I'm just saying, though, when you look at what we have in one of these attachments, so assuming these are all, these are numbers, you add the three years, that's like five something, the capital improvements is 1.1. We're not doing it all at the same time, so 1.1 and five is like 1.7, so it's not 2.1.
We've got to get through the next three years.
Right.
That's obviously where we're at, okay? And I believe that there's margin based upon the revenue forecasting that I've done in the general fund. There's revenue, excuse me, in the Stormwater Fund, there's enough margin with the growth of the city to be able to facilitate those incremental additional contributions that are going to need to be made year over year to facilitate the running of the golf course.
Right, but even, I'm just saying, but even if you did it according to these numbers, it ain't 2.1 million, huh?
Uh, I...
So 1.7 or 1.8.
When you started, I went all together.
Okay. Let me tell you the number that I do know. I've not, I've not gone back and added all three years together. Nick, have you?
I can work that in a second.
Okay. But what I'm looking at right now is the initial contribution that needs to be made of approximately $300,000 out of Stormwater Fund, okay? In addition to that, there's probably going to be some improvements that we're going to need to do to make it user-friendly immediately, coming out of the gate. We've got to do something, okay? So that is going to be coming to you on April 3rd. We're working through that adjustment right now. Following that, looking at the plan that Down to Earth has given us, there is an additional $1.1 billion in capital that's going to be necessary to do the things that they need to do to make it a viable enterprise, okay? So that will be coming to you, not in April, but probably sometime in May, all right? I think I've identified the funding sources for that, and I just want to vet that with staff so that I can bring you the information that's mature, okay? In addition to that, with the loan that we took out was $500,000, okay? Excuse me, it was 5 million. We only got 5 million. There's an unpaid balance there, about $495,000 that we need to fund.
Where do we get the extra $30,000 from? I thought it was 4, 6, or 5,000 additional.
Is it? I don't know. I can't, I'm just going off memory, I'm sorry. Just in rounded numbers, thank you, I'm sorry. But the round numbers are 5.5 billion for the purchase of the golf course, roughly, okay? Just speaking in round numbers. So we've got the 500,000 in additional money that we'll need, and the 300,000 for this year, and the 1.1, so that's about 2 million. Now, the two following years, you're right, I haven't included that in my calculations. But again, I feel that we'll have substantial margin within the Stormwater Fund to be able to cover this. So I'm not intimidated or concerned by that right now, unless, of course, y'all don't approve the funding, then I've got, we've got another, another concern. So with that, I believe that that will get us through from where we are to where we need to be over the next three years.
Now, on the Stormwater thing, would we have to put on capital improvements to make the golf course magic happen? Because I know that the Panther Street ditch, that was supposed to happen, and it's coming up here, but it can't because we don't have the additional funding needed to do the environmental stuff. So that might be a question for Bonnie, or be on the road. I don't know if this is an appropriate time to ask it.
We're still doing all the analytics on that. It would probably...
This is just really...
Yeah. It would be more appropriate for us to bring that information. If you could come up with your list of questions, it would be more appropriate for us to bring that back to you in April, okay? From what I've seen, though, I don't see, and again, I've asked, Kelly just got back from vacation, I asked her to validate my projections today because I kind of inundated her with all these things, okay, because I worked on them last week. If you give us a chance to vet that information, I'll have a better answer for you between now and the end of April, the next budget work session. If I get the answer before then, I will definitely get it to you.
Nobody drives on Panther Street anyway, so.
Hey, it's my thing in the woods.
Who cares about that ditch?
The...
That thing's been in the plan for years.
I know, it just never has happened.
The $60,000 transfer from the Water and Sewer Fund, so that would just, that's just an increase in the transfer?
That's an increase in the transfer.
Okay, so is that, is that projecting additional revenue based off of consumption? Or is that, does that mean the Water and Sewer rates are going to increase?
The Water and Sewer rates increase every year by 3%.
Okay.
Okay. However, we have had significant increases in consumption...
Right.
...year over year. And it's, a lot of it's, a lot of it's seasonal, okay? But some of it is directly related to the growth that we've encountered here in the city of Oviedo.
Okay. All right. So the 3%, the 3% is actually a conservative figure. It could be more than that because of the consumption.
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely.
3% is the rate.
Right, the rate, and it's not, it's not the volume.
Consumption can drive the...
Yeah, consumption can drive, consumption's the big variable, you're right.
Right, right.
Yeah, we did that study with the consultant, and that keeps everything going, so we don't have to do it anymore.
Correct.
Out through a couple of years.
Correct.
Yeah.
At some point in time, we need to do a master rate study, because one's not been done in a long time, but we're not ready for that yet.
Isn't that what we did two years ago?
A revenue sufficiency study.
There's a difference?
Yes.
Okay.
What does it take to make us whole? That's the revenue sufficiency study. Rate study basically says, do you have the right rates and the right tiers, and is it fair to the citizens of Oviedo? That's what we still need to do. Plus, consumption changes trend, excuse me, consumption trends change. We want to be careful to make sure that we take those trends into consideration.
See, I still think the Alfa Utilities folks should pay more money for their sewer than the old Oviedo sewer folks. Should leave us alone. No?
I would like to get to one rate.
Yeah, I know, isn't that where we're going?
Yes, going to one rate. It's easier to...
There were two rates.
To...
Are there?
Not anymore.
Okay.
Currently, two rates. I would like to get to one rate, that'd make it a whole lot easier for the folks.
Here's what happened, Megan, just so you know, when we took over the utility, the utility paid more than the city of Oviedo. So those of us on the east side of town were paying here, and those on the west side, the other side of town, the west side of town were here, east side of town were here, and they've been bringing us up to them. I think, it wasn't like two or three years until we caught up or something?
Yes, but that, that plan was never implemented because that was part of the old PRMG plan.
Oh, so I'm still...
You're still, we're still where we were.
Oh, dogs.
Yeah, so that's why we did the revenue sufficiency study.
We do have to get that fixed.
We've got to get it fixed.
That is inequitable.
It'll be...
I don't need a half sewer.
Yeah.
One sewer comes in.
I want to get it fixed before I retire, so.
That, 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 that 90 will jump to about like 80.
I know, like bajillions.
No, 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 because then the Water, the Water and Sewer Fund gets to fund that. But whether they'd ever recruit that money, who knows?
Probably not. Well, the sewer line ran right down to get to Boys Town, that new Meritage and all the, you know, the, the additional capacity wasn't included, and the pump to get things uphill wasn't included, so now nobody gets sewer down in Emanor. Bless.
Any other questions?
We're going to let Megan go tell everybody in Emanor that we're going to run sewer lines, and it's mandatory that you have to hook up to it.
Before this meeting started, I was trying to explain-
Should I get Tom on the phone now, and you can explain that to him?
I don't want a sewer. But it's, it's better for the environment.
You know, we put a line in down 426 years ago-
And nobody's connected, all the commercials-
Well, because it was supposed to be mandatory, and on a three-to-two vote, it was not mandatory. So now we got an empty sewer line. I remember that. That was way before you. That was back in 2001.
Awesome.
I know somebody who would have voted not to connect it.
Yes, I do.
I, I don't know how that-
You know, you may be related, who knows?
I couldn't, I always couldn't believe it, I didn't have a synagogue.
There might be some relations, share some chromosomes, who knows? Anyway, go ahead.
Well, Mayor, Council, if there's no other questions in regard to where we're currently at-
Good.
-and the map that we're trying to create together for you, if you have any suggestions, please get with Kelly and myself.
The only thing I want to bring up to the new members is that that negative number is the same negative number we see every year for the last three, four, five years, and-
But that doesn't include any golf stuff, so golf is going to like really throw us out of whack.
Great statement. Golf has no impact on the general fund.
Yeah.
It's totally isolated to the enterprise funds.
Right.
Okay.
We're very careful to do that, because-
We, we look at the numbers like this every year, that's why Steve and I are sitting here very calm, and-
So we're not going to take the, when we get later on talking about the CRA, say, hey, now that we're going to keep 50% and send it back to the general fund, the general fund then going to send that over to golf course and say, hey?
No, there's no plans to do that at this time.
So there's not going to be any transfer from the general fund to the enterprise funds?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay.
That is not on my radar.
Okay.
My radar right now is to make sure that the volatility that's, that's within the general fund is resolved before anything like that takes place.
Okay.
Okay? And there's some things now that we, we'll come up with new things between now and April that could make this number larger or smaller. You know, it depends on what the state does. The state's always playing with our revenues every year.
Right.
Okay? So there's some stuff out there in regard to that.
Communications taxes and stuff.
I'm sorry?
Communications taxes.
Communications tax, business tax.
I don't know if that's under assault this year. I haven't heard that one. This year's the business tax.
The last meeting that I went to, the leaving communications tax alone, they've kind of done what they've wanted to do to that, okay? This year, you're right, it's business tax. Business tax is under assault. Anything that happens to those changes this number, okay?
Right.
And again, there's still volatility. I'm concerned about what's going to happen here in this line, workers' compensation. I'm concerned about that.
The gym membership and exercise.
Yeah.
Keep that, keep those bones going. So just for clarity, Jerry, so, you know, then Bob was talking about enterprise, so 29 million is the general, but when you add in the water and sewer and the stormwater, those three funds, the total budget's what, about 51, 52 million, somewhere in that range? Then you got the inter-fund transfers, it's like another 9 million.
Correct.
So the total budget is what, like 60?
70.
In the 70s?
Yeah, 70, roughly.
Right, gotcha. That's the everyday operation to run the city, right there.
Correct.
Gotcha. Yep.
What's the status of those four positions? Have they been hired yet?
Assistant City Manager, we've gotten all the applications in, they're currently under review. I don't think that they've, Connie, have they scheduled interviews for those yet? We are in the selection process right now for the IT Director. We've whittled it down to two candidates. They're coming in to make additional presentations, I think the end of March, next week is one, and then early April is the other one. And the Management Services, the Communications position, I don't think that that has been advertised yet, has it?
Now, the 105,000, that's just the salary, correct, for those positions? Estimated salaries?
Not including healthcare and benefits?
All the benefits, that's not the fully loaded?
No, it's just salaries.
The salaries?
All the, all the healthcare is included.
Are those reasonable salaries for an IT Director? That seems a little low.
Actually, this is reasonable for public, and we had 100 and how many responses on this, Connie?
148.
148?
We just did a salary study.
Yeah. We were starting out in the low Ovid 90s, and Connie and I talked about that, we just didn't feel that we would get the quality candidates at that level for an IT Director. But for general government, it seems to have attracted the quality person that we're looking for to, to bring into the city.
Okay.
Okay? We've got two really top-notch candidates that we're going to go through final interviews with.
All right.
Top-notch.
What's next, Jerry?
What's next? Nick is here. Nick, I'm not sure how you want to do this, but-
I'm going to pause here and introduce the gentleman I have with me.
The Down to Earth team's here to walk you through-
Anything else on the budget, or we just-
Nothing else on the budget.
Down to Earth presentation and then calling it a night?
Yeah, you're good direction on the two things that I brought up at the beginning of the meeting, and then we'll-
I don't know if anybody's ready for final direction on that, but we'll revisit before we go.
Very good, thank you. Nick, or who's? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I should have asked.
Transfer the money and-
Kelly, do you have any?
Keep the middle to a safe. Oh, yeah.
Collette, do you have anything?
All right. Anybody? No?
Hello, everybody. For those who don't know me, my name is Nick Dunleavy, and then with Down to Earth, I have two associates with me here tonight. I have Michael Mosler II, and also Tony Huerta, who some of you have met in some previous meetings, and maybe they can come up and just say hello and talk a little bit about Down to Earth.
Come on up, Jets. Where do you find that? Attachments?
Oh, here it is. Yeah.
Good evening, my name's Kevin Huerta. Just to say a few brief things about the company, I think I've been running through how we have planned it forward in-
Thank you, sir.
...assisting the city with the golf course, but Brian Wallen came up and said a few words, but-
Your eye looks a lot better.
What?
I said, your eye looks a lot better.
I can see.
Good for you. Last time I saw him, he looked like a pirate.
Anyway, Down to Earth was formed back in 1988. Started out as primarily a landscape installation company. We, later years, got into grounds, maintenance, and then about 2007, got into the golf course management business. We currently maintain approximately 20 golf courses throughout the state. The city came to us probably then six or seven months ago that we started talking about Twin Rivers. They became highly recommended to the city. We used to maintain the-
Take one more, Nick. Thank you, sir.
The UCF driving rooms, we used to, we don't anymore. But that may be changing, but, so we, we're trying to grow our golf business, and we think we'll be doing through word of mouth. And every, all the negotiations with the city so far have been good, and everything works out, but as far as what we're planning on doing, I've gone in and I'm going to take over.
Thank you, Tony. I first became acquainted with Down to Earth as a client. They were taking care of golf courses that I was working at, and, and they did a great job, and in those interactions, I realized that the company had good ethics, and when the opportunity came up for me to join the company, I was happy to do it, so thank you, guys. Well, hopefully this is more fun to talk about than some of the stuff we've been through so far, but my plan really isn't to go through this thing line by line and grind through it. I can just talk in, in round terms and tell you that most golf courses, by necessity, have their expenses under control, so there probably isn't a lot of room to get on the expense side. We're actually going to increase spending a little bit in order to bring the, the facility back up to where it needs to be, to be able to attract golfers, to, once again, in the numbers that can make it financially viable, which everybody's interested in here. Right now, as we've talked about in, in various meetings up to now, the golf course is pretty thirsty for some capital upgrades. That's good news and bad news. The good news is, if we're able to do it, we're going to be able to elevate this property above its competition pretty easily. So I don't know if, if you've heard, on the weekend, there was a, a pump failure out there. Worst time of year for it to happen, that's always when it does happen, and one of the capital improvements we talked about was getting irrigation working. So right now, it's a very inefficient process. I'd hope to have Julie here tonight to introduce her to the room as well. She's the current General Manager there. We've committed to keeping the current staff and working with them. Julie, since she's not here to defend herself, I'll do a little bit myself. Julie's been in the area as a golf professional for many years. She has a, a pretty varied experience. She's a PGA member, and she's lived and died over there for the last several years, so I, I think she's anxious to, to see the place turn around and be part of the renaissance of the place. Right now, in round terms, the revenue for the property is under a million dollars, is actually going to be probably, I think their last year was on, just under $900,000. The, the break-even level for that property is something between 1.2 and 1.3 million dollars. That's what I've identified as on the expense side, within the papers that I've handed out to you. So step one is going to be getting the property back up to snuff so that we can attract golfers, and then it is a revenue generation project to the hill.
How fast could you do it? If we were just, in your dream world, say, it looks like 1.9 million would get it as good as it's going to get, or as good as you think you can get it, if you got that April 11th?
Right, so the, I think the capital portion of that's something in the 1.2 range, 1.1, 1.2, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, that was for like the low end. For, for the dream, then it was like 1.9.
Well, I think, what was, I think that the, there's some, there's some losses, I think, that are included in that entire number-
Okay.
-for the first couple of years.
So you got 1.2 on April 11th, which I don't think is practical. Is that a practical speed?
Not on April 11th.
Okay.
I need to work with Nick to find out the timing of the capital that he needs. I know that there's a priority list, and I know that there are immediate needs, so what we're going to do is address the immediate before we just chuck it all over there.
Okay.
So we are looking at that, though.
How fast could you get it to a place where it's profitable, if, if we weren't stingy with giving the capital?
Well, if, if we do the projects we want to do this summer, we will go into this fall with a significantly better product. Still getting better, it won't be all the way there, but we'll have the tools in place to make it what we want it to be. Then throughout the- and our numbers. So I hope we get to a better place faster than, than what you've been showing me.
So you think if the money were there by, say, May, you, you could get the contractors in place to have it all ready to go by next fall?
Our goal would be to get irrigation done this summer, as well as bunkers. There's, and those things are time-sensitive due to weather and also the-
Because it rains every day?
And, and I'm sure once the new irrigation system goes in, we'll have rain every single day from then on, issue again. But between now and then, it's going to be really dry. But right now, the irrigation system, the way it is right now, it's a horribly inefficient way to water a golf course. The guy's there all the time, non-stop, because he can only operate a little bit of it. It'll become a much, much more efficient process.
So you're going to, you're going to sink a new well? Like, how big is the well right now?
Same, it's the same, same well, and there's been some improvement with the pump station more today.
Is it like a six-inch, 10, 8?
You know, at Christmas here, we can tell you exactly that, but that's, that's his expertise, not mine. The infrastructure for it's in place, it's a matter, it's more a matter of controlling it.
Okay.
So it's a hydraulic system now, and there won't be a hydraulic system after.
So you got your distribution system on all the, on all the holes is good, you know, they're pointing in the right spot, they're just delivering it.
The superintendent will do the distribution as well.
Yeah, good.
That's-
Nice.
Which is not close to maintenance right now. So we're going to, we're going to gradually improve revenue, hopefully not so gradually, but to be, to be fair and be honest about it, it's, it's probably going to take into the third year before we start feeling good.
Right.
Word will travel. Word travels pretty fast in, in the golf business. It's a small business, and everybody seems to know everybody else's business, and if something good is happening, people know it, if something bad is happening, they know that as well.
Hey, can I ask you just a quick question, Nick, and just in your experience, you know, a golf course like Twin Rivers that, you know, is, is a nice course, but, you know, it needs some stuff, does it help, like, right now, to lower the prices of, to play around of golf? Eventually, you want to make it higher, because it's better, and you want to get, to, to attract more golfers, because, I mean, golf, we, we know golf is not where it was 15 years ago, 10 years ago, but to get new players, hey, you know what, I really don't want to spend whatever it is, 25, 30, you know, and on these days, they come out and pay for half that. Does it, is, is that a, a strategy that you would use to attract new golfers, or not so much?
It's, it's one you can use, it's one I have used, however, it doesn't work as well as you think it would.
Right.
Various times over the years, I've tried things like that, which you often find out is, you just cost yourself, if you lowered it five bucks.
Right.
It cost yourself five bucks a player, because the same ones that were going to be there-
People are going to play.
-are there, and, and nobody who came, so.
So maybe like an autograph session with the mayor or something would be better.
That one I don't have on my list, but I'll write that down afterwards.
There you go. Let me ask you a question. At its, in its heyday, the revenues were much higher, I remember seeing. I mean, the, the number that you're throwing out there is not an inconceivable number to hit, based on some of the old numbers that I've seen the course do.
Well, just to give you an example, and talk about it in terms of round count, when I first came to this area in the early 90s, golf course I worked at, which is similar to the one we're talking about, did 55,000 rounds.
Wow.
And that number's declined there in many places since then. They're in the high 20s at Twin Rivers right now, that number needs to be more like 35, 6, 7, 8.
Right.
Hopefully 40.
Yep.
Also memberships. I mean, we know we had that conversation, I mean, um, you know, it is the Twin Rivers Country Club, we're gonna reach out to the HOA and get them to get their members to get their memberships again, even if they're just social memberships at the clubhouse, just so you sell food. It's more profitable to sell food than it is to sell a round of golf.
Yeah, I had a, a good meeting already with the HOA and, um, we're planning an event actually, hopefully in early May.
And then now that this is a city course, it doesn't necessarily have to be just the HOA. I mean, you start there.
Right.
But then, but then the...
You start with the closest neighbors and...
Right, then, I mean, the memberships can be citywide. I mean, you, you, you have an opportunity now to, you know, perhaps tap into revenue sources that the golf course operators were never interested in tapping into because, you know, they, they had a different plan for the course.
Right, and, um, conditions will be a big part of that as well.
Well, it'd be nice to have sand in the traps instead of the base in the traps.
That would be nice. That would be nice. And they'll look so much better too. It'll be, it'll actually be more important visually than it will be playability probably.
I, I don't play that much golf, but, you know, we go out there for tournaments, it's, um, it's tough to play.
Well, there's a, there's a lot of business out there if you have a product and the key is to get the product and that's, that's gonna be job one.
Can I throw an idea out here? On, uh, April twenty-first, that is, so we, we close on it April tenth, the next weekend, that coming weekend is Easter weekend, I think since everybody in the whole town knows that we're gonna buy it, we should create a day when people can go out there and walk around on it, not necessarily play golf. So just throwing it out there to see if y'all think it's a good idea.
It's all day revenue. That's your call.
I think it would be a good idea. We would pick a day, whatever day of the week, that happens to be the day before Earth Day, April twenty-second is Earth Day. Everybody feels like we bought this with the stormwater utility fund because it's good for floods and stuff like that.
You're the only one that thinks that. Everyone else thinks it's great that we bought it so it doesn't get developed, but that's okay.
But, but even if it's for that purpose, it's a, an earthy hippie sort of a thing and to, to have one day after, right after, you're close to after we get it, to just let people go roam out there and see whatever there is to see, get it out of their systems, it seems like a sensible idea to me.
It's good, but actually there's, we're probably gonna do something like that, but not exactly the way you suggested. I think it is important to re-present the property. So I think the first thing we need to do is have folks in from, from the neighborhood, ask some of you folks over there.
I'd rather you do something like she, uh, Councilwoman suggested, but after you've cleaned it up a little bit.
Right, so I think the, the...
Or the before and after.
The first gathering of people will be, here's what we're gonna do.
Before right now is pretty good.
Here's what we're gonna do, here's what you can expect to see, and then when the product is done, then of course, a huge, you know, reopening too.
Then we have to also sit down again with Brad Strickland and UCF, you know, because they want to improve that entranceway behind the court shacks and make it more presentable. So before we start, you know, running around doing something, we should sit with them because they were talking about, uh, possibly having some funds to contribute towards that, you know, gating the entranceway, paving it, so when they bring their recruits in, you know, they're bringing them down, UCF path, so to speak.
I haven't spoken to Brad directly, but I have some contact with folks over there and think they're gonna be much more open to things.
Okay, good. But just stay in contact with them and then if we need, we can call, Brad is the Assistant Athletic Director, it's usually easier to go to Brad first and let him vet all the ideas and then he can run them off the flagpole. But the, the last meeting we had with Brad, that was a, uh, an idea that actually they had that could be a possibility through a fundraiser that they're doing, so.
Yeah, I think there's lots of, lots of...
There's a lot of buzz right now down there. They're, they're waiting for us to show commitment.
Exactly.
And as you know, I mean, once we show commitment, I think we'll get, we'll get them to show more commitment. It's just gonna take time. They got burned once before and they, they have no interest in stroking a check like they did last time and then not having it taken care of.
And Tony spoke to her earlier as well, we're gonna try and bring the maintenance of that facility back.
Well, you were the one who took care of it originally.
Yeah, yeah, so we still have a relationship there.
Right, yeah, just don't forget that one though, keep farming that.
Now, on this Earth Day idea, if we were to not do golf one afternoon or one morning, whatever's the least revenue lost on that Friday or Saturday, how many, how much revenue would be lost in opening it up and just saying you can roam and see the deer or whatever you may see? Because I, I think there's an expectation management component to this too, because a lot of people feel like it's gonna be a city park and they're gonna be able to go see it. So this would be a good opportunity to let them go see it and then say, if you wanna come back, you gotta play golf and it's gonna cost X.
Again, I'm not hearing that from folks.
I hang with different folks, I guess.
Well, I guess you do.
You have different, you have different crowds, both of yous, that's for sure.
Are you hearing that, Steve?
No, I'm not hearing it, I'm just saying, your, your circles are different, that's all. You have, you have different circles. No, I don't hear it, but just saying.
I, I don't disagree with the Councilman's idea, I just don't know if it's something we have to do a week after the golf course.
I think, I think that's a follow project, you know, after we get improvements done.
Haven't said, haven't, haven't heard this, these two arguments, but I, it is important though, and that's why I talked to you about sales and just getting people out there. I would, me personally, I, I love, and I say this all the time, that's what I do for a living, is sell stuff to big cable companies. And it's, it's hard and you gotta negotiate, you gotta play like that, you know, it's, for lack of a better word, it's just trying to cut a deal. I still think that, to her point, to one day...
Get people excited about it, you know?
Let people go out there, maybe not so much, because I don't think the whole community, golfers, people who are not golfers may not want to go out there, but I think one day, hey, why don't you come out here and see this and for this day only, a day that's weak, that you're not gonna do it, let them go out there and play for half price. Because I will tell you, once you put a golf club in a kid's hand...
Well, that's, that's, that's great to do when the improvement's...
Right.
We'll see what we did.
Right. Come out and try, we made some updates, come out, let them go out there once and play it cheap. You know, and I could just tell you, like, for both, I bolt. So when I see, when it, people, it's a dollar game, the place is packed. When it's four dollars, not so much. So it's better to get some revenue than none. People, you create some new players, you put a golf club in a young kid's hand and he gets the feel of it, you know, you got somebody playing for their whole life, you know, so I think it's...
We'll do all kinds of things to present the new products and get word out as quickly as possible. And I'm happy to have those conversations.
I can remember living in Long Island, the Bethpage Black Course, right? Everybody wanted to play that course, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but they had, yeah, they had the red, it, all these crazy courses and everybody's black was tough and they cleaned it up and they made it nice and they had some big tournaments out there. Was there a US Open that was out there? And then, you know, maybe we can do that, you know, shoot for the stars.
Well, again, that, that comes with the product and...
Yep.
So in other words, you want the US Open.
We want it.
I'm not sure you guys what was gonna happen.
Tom, shoot for the stars.
Is there a, a branding and remarketing strategy?
Are we gonna rename the thing?
Well, that's up to you.
It'll be good.
Certainly we can have that conversation, but if, if there were, if there were naming opportunities with folks around, it could be the XYZ Club at Twin Rivers.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, there's...
That, that was a discussion that was had with certain universities south of us.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I would think there's opportunities there for sure. And, and there's all kinds of events that come out of the university, just for faculty and whatnot.
And that's, we gotta get those all back here, because they all used to be here. You know, when, when Delarosa and them first took it over and UCF put in those longer tees, they used to have all the tournaments here. And then they declined the course, they all went elsewhere, but they don't want to go elsewhere. You know, when they, when they're going down to Champions Gate and all these others and they're traveling, you know, forty-five minutes an hour to go play a, a charity tournament or scramble and they can play it three miles from their university, I mean, there, there's your revenue.
Yep.
They, they, they told us they put on something like, what was it, fifty or sixty?
Yeah, it was like over one a week.
Yeah.
I think it's sixty or something.
Tournament's a year, but they put on, I mean, you need to get half of those back here.
Yeah, I'd be interested in all of some of those, they're, they're out there for sure. And then somebody says membership earlier too, and I think it's really important for you to grow the membership base there. Also, I think it's important that we do some things to get more games going so that you get regular groups of guys.
Now, we're getting rid of foot golf, right?
No, no, keep it. I'm the non-golfer in the group.
I'll, I'll speak to that.
Get rid of it.
My attitude initially was that. Uh, since then, at least in the short term, it's a, it's a really...
It's growing, right? It's exciting and interesting.
There's enough revenue there from the finances I've seen that it shouldn't be just discarded, at least in the short term.
Foot golf.
Doesn't it damage, does it damage the...
Yeah, but I, I heard from golfers, they don't want to be out there with that.
I'm really anxious to get on the ground there and see...
There, there's some other golf that's started with...
They're just being snobby.
Well...
Yeah, leave enough, leave a green between them so they won't have to see the people playing from them.
Yeah, the upside of it is, it's a, it's a very unintimidating way to introduce people to the golf course.
But isn't there some sort of new golf that's played in something like a lacrosse stick where you actually throw the golf ball?
I saw a story on that actually, yeah.
Right, but tho- but those...
That's, that damages it.
No, but, but you, the difference is with, with that game, and it's actually Shank sent me the article on it, is that that's played from the tee boxes, from the actual tee box. It's played on the same course.
The story I saw was from Duckstrid.
Yeah, right, so what they're, so what they're doing is they're, instead of, you know, swinging a club, they're just throwing the ball. It's played the same way. It's not this foot golf where, you know, you got these, these, these soccer people out there, uh, and that's a way to perhaps look at it. So then the course is being used as a course, you don't have, you know, soccer people out there and golf people out there.
So you're throwing the ball off the tees and stuff and then...
You're using the golf ball, you're just, it's a special stick.
Oh.
It's like a lacrosse.
Right.
And you, and you're just, you're throwing it and then when you get up, you actually putt. The thing turns into a putter, I'd say, it's just one...
It's good compromise.
It's one club.
I think the foot golf though, wouldn't that like damage your course and like stuff and greens and stuff?
Yeah, you could put the ball.
Well, they're not on the greens, they have separate holes that they, they go to, they're, you know...
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, they got the, next time you go down Lockwood and you go over the bridge, look to the right, you'll see the orange hole.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Big gigantic, looks like a marquee.
It's worth a look, they have, it's only in the front nine and there's two soccer ball holes in general per, uh...
You're the, you're the expert.
All right, that's up to you, I just...
I have it on my mind right now, we'll see.
Councilman Britton is here, he closed your mind on it, but that's okay. You gotta, you gotta break tonight from the only real golfer amongst us.
I'd like to get in there and see what the effects are, if there really is a nuisance or...
You're running it.
The only people I know who use the course, use it for foot golf.
Well, so it's also enough opportunities, there's birthday parties, his kids can, everybody can do it, there's company parties, you know, not everybody can go out there and play golf.
Can I ask you one thing about that irrigation, just real quick? Did, you know, you had a failure of the pump. You know, you said the, the pipes and the infrastructure, they're there and that's all working good. Is it, are you pulling the water out of the well? Is that one pump pressurizing that whole system or do you have multiple pumps?
There's multiple pumps.
There's multiple, so is it, when it's starting to get weak, you grab another one and pick it up again?
So if it's, depending on how much water is being called for, jump in, you know, better than be on the side of...
Right, okay, so it's multiple, I just want, that's fine, I just want, it's multiple pumps, it's not just one doing it. Okay, gotcha.
Right, and then you get some water from us too, reclaim comes over there.
Yeah.
From that pumping station by the skate park.
Yeah, so there's a little work left to be done in the pump station, there was some work done, but it's still...
Gotcha.
Need a little help.
Cool.
That pumping station looks like something from the, the old television show, Petticoat Junction, the Green Acres. That, that looks a little ancient over there.
It is.
I can just imagine a hand pump and two guys in there up and down with it.
Have I guessed the numbers to your satisfaction? I know I didn't...
Guys, are you good?
Yeah, looks good.
Five any questions yet?
Move forward to it.
I mean, it's early, we know, but...
I'm good, I, I, you know, I, I feel like that the, you know, we'll, we'll have to put, you know, a decent amount up front, but it'll pay off, you know, and the revenue's down the road. I mean, we, we have to make it attractive.
The sooner we do it, the faster we can benefit from it.
And I think the Councilman, Deputy Mayor Henken's, uh, point though is that, you know, whether it's discount golf or not, I'm not debating how you do it, but, you know, a whole marketing campaign has got to be part of this.
Right.
I mean, after you start to get it in better shape, then it, then it, then it's gotta be, you know, come on out residents and see what's been done.
There's lots of discount platforms out there to, to market to golfers, um, you know, group golfers, one, you know...
Right, but I think af- after you get it where it's starting to elevate, where people can see changes, you know, then, then you do something for the residents and have a picnic, party, I, I, whatever it is. Whatever it is, have a half day of golf, have a, uh, you know, you can...
A big barbecue and have as many people out as we can get out there.
Right, you know, let them, let them come out and play in the morning and then maybe close it down at four, five o'clock, just thinking outside the box here and let people wander around it. Grab a car, go drive around, type of deal, I mean...
I'm open to, uh, all suggestions.
I think, I, I would go pay money to just drive a car around the golf course. I, I know a lot of people who...
Just for a day in the park.
How many days a week would you be willing to do that?
You gotta think like, what, what are you gonna do with the people who play golf?
You don't want to be out on the golf course though when golf balls are flying around.
Yeah, maybe not. Look, what happens if somebody shows up?
You would drive a bike?
Yeah, I, I would bike it. No, but what happened though, if I, if I ride my bike to the golf course, I think, hey, it's city owned, I think I'm gonna go for a little bike ride.
It's a golf course, it's not a park.
But I, people aren't gonna...
Yes, they are.
Some people are gonna think about it that way, but other people are gonna think, this is a city-owned thing.
That happens, that happens particularly with, with the closest neighbors to the golf course. I think it's a nice idea to go have a walk or whatever.
Till the balls stop flying.
The truth is, it gets dangerous pretty quick with golf balls out there.
Right, Duckstrid is a city-owned golf course. People don't go biking to it and go have a picnic on the eighth green, I mean, it just doesn't happen.
Well, not on the course, because there could be arsenic.
It could be.
But, you know, what, what is, what is the planned approach to that? If somebody shows up and, and thinks, I'm just gonna go, like, I'm just crazy enough, I might show up and just sort of kind of walk around and look, because I'm curious, I've been curious for months, but...
My answer to you, if you showed up and you wanted to go have a look, I'd say, hop in a car, I'd be happy to take you for a ride.
But that's me, like, what about a regular person, just a regular old taxi driver?
No, I mean, anybody.
Anybody, really? Okay. As long as everybody who's just keenly curious.
We just can't out there wandering around not knowing that golf balls come from that direction on this hole and...
Because I think there's plenty of clueless people out there, because I don't know anything about golf and I would just go out there.
There would be a, an insurance liability expected on it.
Okay.
Something we have to be very, very careful about.
Is there signage that says this stuff for the clueless people of the world?
There is, there is signage out there.
Well, let me ask you a question. Okay, this, this has got to stop this crazy stuff. Do you go walk around the golf course now?
No, I don't. But, but it's privately owned. But I think about city-owned properties differently.
City-owned golf, do you go walk around the sewer pipe?
No, it's locked. But that's a, but that is because...
No, no, the gate's open every day, it's city-owned, you go walk around it?
Well, actually, I did go walk around it without being announced at a time. I just showed up and they were very nice and gave me a tour.
I'm just making a point, Evans Street, it's open every day, do you go walk around it? City-owned. Oh wait, the landfill, city-owned, you can go walk around it every day.
I have walked around that too.
Okay, well, it's got, it's got a, it's got a big rock crusher up on the top of it. I mean, I'm just saying, come on.
It's a golf course.
It's a golf course.
It's a course, but it's city-owned.
Everybody, it doesn't matter whether it's city-owned or privately owned, it's a golf course and you go there to play golf.
You don't want to make it that way, if you just let it lie, let us do our stuff, let, let these guys get in there.
Well, no, I, I think we need to fund you guys fast and thoroughly and get it in, try to get it to work. Either we're gonna do it full force or, you know, that's the direction I, I think it should go.
Yeah, we gotta make it work.
And have it done by fall, if you can do it by, can you start the gears in motion with, can, can we, this early in the process, know that we can fund all of the things that need to be funded to have it ready by fall? Because is that when the season restarts? I don't know how those sites work.
In our first world, we would want to have irrigation in, uh, and done, bunkers in, done, there's improvements to the building.
Summer's usually the slower.
But we're, we're trying to beat the heavy rain to do irrigation because it makes a big...
Yeah, yeah, summer's usually for golf.
So when do you...
Except for the morning, because nobody wants to play in the afternoon because it rains.
Nick, those are capital improvements you identified in the packet, that 1.1 million over all those, is that basically all we need to get it to, wow, this is a really nice course? Now, obviously, any ongoing maintenance, more things happen, but that gets you to, like, you're above Sanford, you're above Castle
So that was the infrastructure in place to do it, then the maintenance practices will turn on that, and the thing will get better. We will see improvements by the end of this year, it'll get better again next year.
Right.
Are we just waiting for the grass to
And then they come in at a maintenance stage.
Gotcha.
For maintenance, is that just waiting for the grass that's already there to get green because now it's getting watered properly? Kind of?
Yeah, that's part of it.
Okay.
The seasons have different effects on it, too, so it looks completely different. Like, right now, it looks really dry.
Yeah.
Even the courses that have good irrigation systems are really dry.
It's dry, yeah.
And then I noticed something about nematodes, and if you're an organic yard person, you introduce nematodes to your grass on purpose because they eat, I think it's chinch bugs or something, but it sounds like it's bad for whatever grass is there.
No, you don't introduce nematodes.
We do in some places, but not on a golf course.
I have a feeling, that's like, you ever see Caddyshack? That's like gophers on it. You don't want that, you know?
So there's nematodes and nematodes and bad, so what do you do to
My suggestion is for Mr. Booth and Ms. Jones to sit down and look at the budget, or look at the finances.
Get this all going, before we worry about having parties in the
Yeah, I mean
It will be a goal, that's the goal.
It's awesome. I mean, try, you know, whatever we've gone
It snakes out of the fertilizer.
We'll throw at it as much as we can.
And then if I remember in one of our earlier meetings, I mean, the thought process has always been irrigation first, greens, traps, tee boxes, and the fairway kind of takes